At the southwest corner of Spring and Worcester Streets. And on this site, there once stood a federal rowhouse that was later demolished. And then at the time of designation, this site was a parking lot. Ward Higgins, Ward Dennis of Higgins' Grace Park. And the design team is here to discuss this proposal in more detail, the history of the site, and the construction of the new building.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Ward Dennis of Higgins' Grace Park. Preservation Consultants here with the architects from Bowlin, Swinsey Jackson. The application, as Caroline said, is for a new building at the corner of Worcester and Spring Street. As you can see from this image, and as you see in more detail later, the building is substantially constructed of structural glass, a sample of which we have here. It is laminated glass and fully self-supporting. The project will have a single spine wall that will cantilever over to create a roof of beadblasted stainless steel. The rest of the exterior of the building will be of the structural glass. As Caroline mentioned, the project is at this corner, which has been a vacant lot for many years. You see here, there we go, the building is one of the, I guess, few remaining vacant lots in Soho. Historically, the site had a federal period circa 1820s rowhouse that was part of a whole row of houses that extended the full block width from Worcester Street to West Broadway. Over time, some of these remain, about three of these remain largely intact. Others, such as this one to the right here, have either been given new facades or replaced with new buildings, but that twenty-foot rhythm along Spring Street remains. This building, there was a fire in 1943, right after this photo was taken, and the site has been vacant ever since. If you know the site, you probably know it for the flea markets that have been there over the years. Our building is constructed entirely of glass, and in looking at that, what we're really, what we're looking at and what we're deriving some of our inspiration from is the history of the development of cast iron buildings. And Soho being the location of many cast iron buildings gives us an opportunity to look at the development of this building type and what the goals in the architecture were. And chief among them was creating as much light and glass as possible. The earliest generation of cast iron buildings from the 1850s and 1860s, such as you see here, tended to be more masonry, more literally masonry in derivation from the very classic Italian palazzo-style buildings to this building at Grand Street, which, if you did not have a magnet, you would not know it was a cast iron building. It's a very literal Italianate building. By the 1860s and 1870s and later, you started to see more and more abstraction of forms and greater attenuation of forms, less and less structure, less and less cast iron, more and more glass. The 502 Broadway is a very early example of this and considered very transitional in going to the less literal expression of masonry structure. Richard Morris Hunt's 478 Broadway, about fifteen years later, pushes that envelope even further. One building that we've spent a lot of time looking at is 101 Spring Street, the Donald Judd Foundation. This too occupies a corner site two blocks away from our building. And as Frank Grauman from the Architect will explain later, there are a lot of parallels here, but one of the things that we're looking at is how these forms become more and more attenuated and how the glass becomes larger and larger over time, to the point that in buildings such as this, you can actually see through the building on the corner, on the bias of the corner. There is greater and greater transparency to this building, to these buildings. There's also more and more expression of interior circulation with the elevator doors coming down to street level and going up through the building. In the 20th century, this process continued of more and more glass and less and less structure as the technology of steel progressed. Penn Station, which is not at 375 Park Avenue, the very famous Bozart's masonry structure, but inside, the technology, it was a celebration of the technology of the time with the great amount of light being let into the concourse. Later in the 20th century, we see this continuing with projects such as Lever House and the Seagram Building, and probably most directly relevant to this project, the Manufacturers' Trust Company Building, which for its time in sixty years ago, was pushing the limits of glass technology at that time, reducing the amount of structure on the exterior of the building to the minimum that they could at that time. Today, we're able to bring that even further so we can use the structural lazy sandwich to basically support the entire building. In looking at precedents within new buildings in historic districts, we noticed, you know, two sort of general trends. One, taking the more, the literal approach of recreating cast iron buildings. This is actually an exact copy of the building adjacent. These are somewhat more abstracted, but still sort of very clearly readable as cast iron buildings. The other alternative, and the one that we're obviously following here, which personally I think is philosophically stronger, is to do a building that is very much of its time, a 21st century building using 21st century technology and materials. The Jean Nuvell Building, which is very much about glass and color and light transmission. The Architect Conex Building on Best Street Street, which is in the Tribeca Historic District, which uses laminations of marble and glass. And 325 Broadway, West Broadway, which is a recent approval for a cast aluminum facade. At this point, I want to hand it over to Peter Bowlin to talk a little bit about his firm's projects and then show you the building.
Thanks. As Ward has pointed out, what we've seen as this progression...
Can you please just state your name for the record, just so it's clear? Can you just please state your name again for the record?
Peter Bowlin, Bowlin Swinsey Jackson. What we've been able, what our culture has done, and certainly been obvious through the cast iron past, is make buildings that were more and more transparent, and that, and we've continued as a culture, certainly in the city, to push those technologies. And so, where are we now with those, with a sort of fairly clear expression of those technologies? Well, we're at the interior of the Apple Store, two blocks from the site, and that was really the first two-story Apple Store. And the challenge there was to get people to wish to go pop in that building, which is, as retail, a tough one. And so, transparency helped a great deal. And of course, and as you know, that was an historic building, and so when one has historic buildings to relate to, one is really careful how you deal with the changes you make and still retain the building effectively, as we did here. Or we did on, I think, another project you reviewed quite a while ago, at West Fourteenth, where again, we had a historic kind of workman-like building, and we kept the spirit of that building again. But then, when we dealt with issues that were more or less of an existing building, an existing project, as you know, the Plaza happened, someone had stoned his tower. But the underground was always a failure, as many people have pointed out, an urban failure. And so, there, on that Apple Store, it has pushed that technology at that point. You recall, it was multiple banks, and then just before Steve died, he went to, I think it's like 16 or something, I forget the number. And so, we've continued to know more about those things. And of course, you've seen our entry to the Comedian White's University Club, and there again, we were dealing with an existing building and taking great care to slip in a solution that would work, and yet was quite delicate. And of course, as a practice, we've had a history of doing things like the Bell in Dunham's Mall, again, transparent, and... Now, it all comes down to detail, among other things. And so, for instance, as we intend here to beyond the fact that, as Frank will point out, this is a rather interesting case because it isn't a historic building, there's no building there, and there hasn't been for what, seventy years? And it's hard to imagine what one would do here, except here, our client comes along and wishes to make a very delicate, beautiful building that would be of a rather subtle retail structure on, as Frank would point out, and Ward already has, I believe, on a site that's not more than twenty feet wide. So it's extremely interesting from that point of view. And so what we've set out to do, go back one, go back to detail. So it does come down to detail, and I just would point out on all of that, that here we're talking about at that, getting at that level of detail, you know, that we've got proven in the past to do well. And that, you know, because if you don't do one of these things, you get it right, and should probably do something else, but we won't get it right. So my partner, Frank Grauman, will sort of get into more detail on this, but that is where we see we're all standing in our culture and in this place.
Thank you. So for the record, I'm Frank Grauman, partner in Bowlin Swinsey Jackson. It's an extraordinary problem to do with, basically. Spring Street between Worcester and West Broadway is one of the very, very few streets anywhere in Manhattan that is all twenty-foot wide lots, five feet smaller than what's standard in New York, and basically based on a single-family house, an example of which is the neighboring federal building that survives. So we have a client who had the vision to make something of this corner, and essentially to make it a retail place for what he characterizes as very small objects of very high value, which is really one of the rare things one could do here because the site, while it has a high value, it's very small. It's twenty by eighty, but it's encumbered on one side by half of the party wall, so it's going to be functionally nineteen feet four inches. And it's very easy on first analysis to understand why, over seventy-two years since the fire, people have not attempted to build on it. Other twenty-foot wide buildings, such as 148 just up the street, are either new buildings that were built in the 20th century of old lots or radical renovations, and they did become sort of Italianate, heavily glazed, much more modern buildings. But when you try to build a new building, as we all would know, you've got a pair of staircases and an elevator, and there's not much left. And so, not unlike the Soho Apple Store, one question was how to draw people upward through the building, how to make it inviting, and fundamentally, how to make a corner of a building and not have that corner entirely given over to a stair tower. So we are grossing twenty-eight hundred square feet of this project, which is essentially the most you can get and have four levels based on the open stair, so that we have a very open feel. Almost, it's almost a fire escape, if you will, within the building that you know before you enter the building will lead you upward. That, plus a glass-enclosed elevator, as you can see, creates sort of the minimum encumbrance you can on the space and still do something in it, such as having small objects. And so the logic of the building is really to make the most of the site. And quite logically to do that, we are providing all services, including structural support on the west wall, which is adjoining the old party wall. That deals with all the mechanical services, but it also carries the roof as a cantilever, allowing us to do a rather thin, and this is somewhere about five inches, exterior, which in a way is all we can afford with the space and the material, but it coincides with our ability to make the kind of transparency that is needed to make the useful and attractive piece of architecture on this very strange site. So what the staircases do is, as a technical point, they connect two floors, but each floor has a mezzanine. And this pencils out to be the most you can do on this site without plugging the corner with a stair tower. And it happens to produce a very spirited and elegant and, you know, positive contribution to the landscape in many ways, because this is amazingly transparent for five inches. While you all are empowered to think about the exterior of a building, that back wall is as much the exterior of the building as the two surfaces we're building on the lot line. Continuing with the structural concept, the second floor is in turn suspended from the roof on suspension rods that are just inside the glazing. And they not only help us solve the structural problem, but they provide an interesting rhythm and scale, as you'll presently see. And then the glass, which takes on many guises as either transparency or reflection, that can close, can close the box and create the volume. So let's just take a tour around this thing. The upper view is a view of Spring Street, Worcester to your left, West Broadway to the right. And as you can see, it's a very eclectic mix of buildings that all have this twenty-foot module in common, much more delicate than anything else you see in the cast iron district because the imprint on the ground predates all the loft buildings. Worcester Street, on the other hand, is more typical of the district, with lots that have been fused and handsome, tall industrial buildings. Between the two, it's obvious. And as our way of thinking about what Ward was saying about the sort of history and appropriateness of glass and transparency, is that cast iron was sort of the miracle material of the mid-19th century that enabled, enabled this sort of industrial approach that was very new and very breathtaking, characterized the district and allowed slenderness of the exterior wall. We just contrast that with what we're doing right now, where we've basically brought all the metal inboard, except for the suspension cables, have an all-glass exterior. In a way, it's sort of bringing the history of what's happened with glass, the construction of home, because so much of it started in the cast iron district, with the adment of iron as an auxiliary material to glass, becoming eventually the curtain wall, separating structure from the glass. And our way of separating structure from the glass is to put it on the other side of the building because the building is so small. So we see at a very fundamental level in terms of the history of this technology, that it's very much sort of bringing, we started there, back to Soho. The designers of 101 Spring have an extra five feet to deal with the twenty-five foot block. But there, it's instructive and enjoyable to contrast their plan with ours, their expression with ours, including, if you look at the cross-sections, the way one experiences each of those buildings as moving up through a sort of matrix of space that opens out to the street. That building, as Ward said, is really just about the most extraordinary tour de force structurally with glazing that could have been done in this day, carried right to the way daylight gets down into the basements, just except for the traditional ornamentation, you know, sheer abstraction of that, of that technology. And many parallels, such as the ability to see in, see the street beyond, catch the reflections. And so ours is one notch smaller, but very similar. Here again, looking at the twenty-foot module, and realizing that there's a sort of second room to each of those buildings because in many road buildings that narrow, you get the staircase off one side. And indeed, most of these buildings happen to justify that to the right, but each and every one of them has a secondary staircase entrance at gray because that's the nature of such a building. So we thought one way of building that into our design is right in the layer that has the staircase, just indent that quite subtly behind the metal wall, indent back out, that carries that message through to the new building. And here you can see how, seeing through our glass, through the twenty-six-foot-high joint in the glass, that the basic floor modules, which vary in our building, relate very, very closely to the structural scale of the surrounding neighborhood. And that's true across many styles that are represented on that block. Turning the corner and looking at Worcester Street, each of our pieces of glass, insulated glass, are twenty-six feet tall by seven foot nine wide, there are ten bays of it facing the street. And you can see that we took great pains to get that just about the same rhythm that prevails in the masonry neighbors. You can see also that the structural rods are in secondary rhythm, that we could have put them on the joints, but we put them on the midspan, very much like the secondary rhythm of moulages that prevail nearby. Heights, recognizing, taking pleasure in the idea that the upper building is different from the lower, as is the case in almost all the surrounding buildings, and at this idea of a double-height space on the first floor. Just an inventory of the amount of glass, many of the neighboring buildings achieved in many styles and in many technologies, but lots of it. And then you'll find in our submission that we have provided you with technical drawings, both at the building scales, and you can see the, accurately, the height, width, length, and so on of the design, as well as further back in the booklet, serious details about how it's made. We are essentially beyond the normal design development level of the project because we have, working with this technology, have the need to prove out that things will come together with the intended elements. And so we had intended to assure you of that with the details we've provided. But just to read into you very quickly, there are only three materials in the exterior of this building. There is glass. There is a beadblasted stainless panel that is so finished as to be matte and gray and doctor change over time, which is a sort of muted metallic presence. And the third material is that between the pieces of glass, there is sealant, and the sealant is about seven-eighths of an inch wide. It will either be black or a chocolate color. One of the interesting optical effects you get with this glass is that you look at it from the side, it's extremely effective, you get an accurate, very subtle optic, because if you walk around it and you view it at an angle, for optical reasons, it looks much more slender. And of course, that's how you'll experience it. It's like when you stick your finger in a glass of water, it bends. So actually, those joints are more slender than one would imagine looking at that. We consistently draw this building with shadows, not just because we admire those are our drawings, but because, given our site, we don't have the extra five feet that the Judd Building did, we really don't have the space to put depth in shadow into the exterior enclosure. And so we have very, very carefully studied the staircase and the supports and the pattern of relief that that provides through the glass to the exterior. And the shadows help you appreciate that. This floor is about sixteen feet, then ten feet, then twelve, and then fourteen, and that helps us create this distinction between upstairs and downstairs, to get the experience of being in that space, to analogize with the typical experience in the older buildings. Turning to Spring Street, you can see how different this is. It turns into a very proud, tall, narrow building, proper neighbor for the half dozen early 20th century, I don't know what to call them, semi-Italianate buildings, but a facade that does not change materials and that nonetheless participates smartly in that really precious street of narrow buildings. So we bring that downstairs to the entrance. Entrance, it's another place where you will see beadblasted stainless, there's a booth that's inset subtly, that creates a sort of more textured storefront experience. You can see here, looking above where the scale figures are, that in that indented portion, you will be able to appreciate the architecture of staircases inside the building. You can also see that with the staircases turned, that's all we have left to program. So this is a tricky, that's a measure of the trickiness of this. You'll see details that show you later how we get this very smooth transition from the glass to the ground line, having to do with clamping the glass on the ground. I would point to the change in texture in the building when it gets to the stair tower, which is also glazed, but in which we have roughly eight-foot spaced landings. And here, we're expressing the ladder of those landings as part of the exterior, which, going backwards a couple of slides, helps us transition from the simplicity of the corner to the floor structure, to a more textured structure as we approach the masonry buildings. It also keeps our exit door nice and modest, so no one will mistake it for entrance. So just selected details. You know we're driven to do details, as Peter pointed out. The top of the building, the glass sandwiches into something that allows for movement, and then has, I believe it's about seven or eight inch, which is my pointer, beadblasted stainless little cornice cap, whole top is sort of a cornice. Twenty-six-foot-high lifts of glass just kiss the structure in a very slender way. And going down into the ground, part of the strength of the glass has to do with the rigidity of that joint that is held that is held below grade and is sealed at the sidewalk level. Again, the wrong button. The glazing then resolves itself very carefully into pockets, vertically and horizontally. And right at the corner where it all comes together, with a quark, sort of masonry term, in this case, very slender metal corner cap that continues to illusion that the glass is thinner than it appears to be. So this is a building of substance and durability. This is a permanent addition. We thought, when we do a building like this, we should let you all know something about the care that we bring into it. Just a few takes of it in its context. Looking south, Worcester Street, you can see that facade that now tells you from the corner that you're onto an interesting run, a collected run of narrow facades. So you've got Crocs in the corner on the right, and that has a rather short building. And you get to our tall building, and the scale builds up to the E3 Worcester just south of that. But it also tells you something of what to expect when you turn the corner. That same corner viewed from the east, looking west, and you can see that our, sort of, our whole building is a cornice. That cornice height works very well with those of the buildings on Spring Street that do have Italian-made cornices, not to mention this cornice way up there. Looking at it from the south, on Worcester Street, where you always see it at a grazing angle like this. We've done a lot of studies with the glass and with the sun, and we've done it with the models. I'll show you a bit about that. You often get into very, very interesting reflections here. And then finally, for the daytime views, the corner itself here from the west. And one of the pleasures we take in this is that it's very much there. It defines the volume where a building ought to be, and where a building once was. But in a funny way, it also sort of respects the fact that the seventy years, which is a historic measure of time, this was an open space. And so, one can actually see diagonally through the building and through the corner. And who doesn't know in this view, if you're seeing that building beyond or a piece of the reflection? We're preserving a good measure of transparency around that corner. Here's that effect at grade. By night, we intend to light the building with a very soft light. If you walk Soho at night, it is not brightly lit, although there are a few stores that are much brighter than you would wish. Many of the businesses, when you look inside, have a sort of restaurant or museum level of lighting. And to do this thing justice at night, the surfaces that you see through, we intend to light very evenly at that kind of level of illumination, so that it is, marks the corner, but doesn't, doesn't dominate. It also helps the pleasure of being in the building at night, because in such a small building, you really feel much better if you're borrowing the sense of the street. So we like people at night to be able to look out. Again, the view from the east, giving a sense of how it's not the brightest thing on the block, but it sure does mark the corner. And so that would conclude our formal presentation. And I would draw your attention to the fact that we brought a model along. Certainly invite you to look at it. We've taken two of the buildings off the model, so you can see what we have. In effect, it's way down there, so while, so it does not take a lot of direct sun, which is how we're able to do this. But it, you know, stripping it away, you can see what it is. So we've done that. We also, by the way, we know the very best way to look at a model is to squat, put your eye in it. So, for those of you who want to do that, we've done a few photos of it. These are undocked photos, for actual, my colleague Tina House's iPhone, on the actual whiteboard. But actually, this is the one where you get a sense of how reflection works, because you're getting light bouncing off of this building and so forth. And so if you look at these, and you study this very, very hard, we understand that there are all these, you know, sort of subtle things going on. You've got the multiple rhythm, you've got the increasing textures you move this way. And I don't think we have the photo, but there's one that works, that shows our staircase relative to this fire escape. And so we're making references, obviously, to cast iron technology and transparency, but also to many funky things that are going on in this neighborhood, as best we can, and hopefully.
So, just wrap your roof again, is the side going over?
So, the, when Ward talks about glass and structural glass, it is supporting its own weight, because you can't imagine hanging something like this off a building. So the glass is supporting its own weight, but it's not supporting the floors or the people or the activity in the building. There's no, it's only one place to construct here and have any, any land weather. So this wall has enough steel and just muscle in it, that when it bends the corner, it becomes horizontal, it still has structural capacity here to support the roof, and a modest amount of rooftop equipment, and also to support the floor below. So, that is, that is the structural structure to the building. Is that what you were asking?
And that's all in the beadblasted stainless steel, so it will appear like a piece of folded-over beadblasted stainless steel.
Which continues down this side of the wall. And we thought it was quite appropriate, because it will reflect the brightness of the sky. It helps silhouettes by members.
It's pretty clear.
Clear as, as that glass.
Flare is the word. Let's see if public testimony and my investment will raise any questions.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. As the applicant points out in the presentation, there are a number of modern buildings approved by the commission in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Unlike the proposed new building, however, these other structures incorporate some amount of masonry and bay rhythm to recall the texture of this district's industrial architecture. The use of solid paints of glass for this very visible corner building represents a departure from the neighborhood's characteristic forms. HDC asks that the applicant work further on the details of the proposed designs that the building blends better with its context. Thank you.
Okay, any other testimony? Did you go to the community board? We have, we, we don't. Yeah, and I'm not sure we have a, a record from them, but.
In December?
Yeah. Yeah, what's your recollection?
We spent, we spent a long time with the.
Yeah, I bet.
Going through DOB objections. What was the?
We had actually intended to be before you in January.
Yeah.
The DOB objective to having to provide objectives.
No, 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 with the community board.
Well, at the community board, one issue that was very much on their minds, that we are completely sympathetic to, is their concern that building not cause light pollution.
Okay, which you've addressed or?
Certainly addressing.
Yeah.
I think that was the most tangible issue to them. They, they also, just as in the most recent comment, thought it was a lot of blacks, and I think that was really, is that what they're this for?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think they're, they're, they were men, they were concerned about the light. They were concerned about the appearance at night.
Yeah.
They also thought it was well-designed, I think they appreciated the design there.
Okay, the signage across the door, what is that?
Signage is just assigned right here over the front entry, that over.
Made of?
The glass and stainless steel, conventional matters.
All right.
Can I just, just ask HDC comments?
Yeah, sure.
As Frank went over in some detail, a lot of what happens on this building happens on the inside. And when you look at the building, it has a lot of texture and depth to it, because of what happens at the inside. And it also has a lot of relationships to, to its neighbors. Our first mezzanine generally lines up with the storefront second-floor level of the adjacent buildings. And as you go up the floors, on Spring Street, you, you get that relationship. And clearly, in terms of height, we're very contextual. When you turn the corner onto Worcester, we take on a different scale. We do so because of the scale of the loft buildings adjacent. And you can see our Worcester, our Spring Street level, rather, here, transitioning up. And you can also see how the larger divisions of, the larger divisions of the structural glazing corresponds to the larger divisions of the adjacent buildings. And then the tension rods that come down to make up the smaller divisions, like muttons on a, on a historic building. So, a lot of this is happening inside the building, but the inside of the building here is very much the design of the building. And equal attention, I think, has been paid to both.
Right. Mark, what about regulation of the inside of the building?
We generally don't regulate it by more than eighteen inches.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
What about the light?
Yes, right now on the spot.
And night, do you do a window showing?
Yes, yeah. The, as Frank discussed, the, the intent with the lighting is really to have a, a low level of light in the evening. We, we don't need a lot of light. If you look at, for instance, the Chanel store, that's just dumping out light, and that's really not necessary. You can actually, we, we actually will probably raise the level of light during the day, so that you can see into the building a bit better. But at night, you can really dial it back. And it can be, you know, it is our intention and the client's attention that this will be a low level of light.
What are those little things that you're selling, that you mentioned?
I'm not actually sure what the crown jewels are. The client owns a couple, a couple of different higher-end fashion companies, and I don't think he's decided which one is coming in here.
Okay. Well, let's jump into it. Jump into it. Wow, I'll jump right into it, all right. Well, I'm not sure I've ever seen such an elegant and deeply intellectual presentation, certainly per square foot of what's being applied for. This tops all, all records of, at least in my experience. I want to comment on, on many things, and I'll do it quickly, and others will, will speak as well. Lots of glass, says the, the community board. Well, yes, that's kind of the point, it seems to me, lots of glass. The rigorous presentation of the history of, of glass technology, and, and not just generally, but in this very historic district, and how it was developed here, seems to me to suggest, but who would have thought it, not me, that this is the natural conclusion of, at least of our era, of pushing that technology forward and looking to create a building on a vacant site. Poetically, still vacant in a certain wonderful way, too, with this building. I, I think the, the, as Ward just summed up, the reading of the context here was very, very sophisticated and artful. And I don't think it's artificial. I think it can be understood by, by people looking at this building who won't just understand it as a glassy building, but, but can see through and understand how the relationships on both streets, very different relationships on each street, the narrow Worcester and the, and the broader Spring, how the design reflects that context. This is an incredibly contextual building, actually. But it relies somewhat on the reading through the glass, to see the stairs and the, and the change of levels. And so I'm really, I'm thrilled to see this presentation. I mean, it's a rare day at this commission when we have a gold medal winner of the AIA come and present to us a, a building. And I think it's extraordinary, and I'm, I'm personally just thrilled to, to listen and look at this, at this building. And I think unless others completely disagree with my approach, the, we, we sort of tinker with this at our own peril. In a way, who are we to do so? But unless the building is all wrong for this context, which I think it is not at all wrong, then I, I for one will not want to tinker with the details, which have been so thoroughly thought through. But what I want to leave, I want to just leave on one thought. The building is twenty feet wide. It's a tiny little building. And I'm thinking a lot about, as, as you were, the Manufacturers Hanover Building on Fifth Avenue and Forty-third Street, and how it was declared a landmark long ago, and then more recently, an interior landmark. And yet, I'm, I'm glad it's all of that, and it's the right thing to have done, but yet still, it's compromised by curtains that are different, lighting which is different on different floors. And so the reading of that building is not quite as it ought to be. But if, if, if this commission is going to approve this building, I'm just going to suggest that we think of, of landmarking the interior of the building, because the interior is the exterior. And let's not get into the same situation we had at Manufacturers Hanover. I don't know if there's any precedent for such a crazy idea, but it seems to me as if we're in pioneering territory anyway, so let's think broadly.
Well, I gotta say that I, I too am honored to, to be here, to hear this presentation from such an eminent architect and such an eminent firm. And I think that their track record of producing buildings that are beautifully, beautifully built, and have a very highly refined sense of detail, is, precedes them and gives me, anyway, a certain level of trust that this building will be done correctly, with care and with beauty. And I, I agree with Fred that it is a beautiful object that is produced, or that is proposed in a scheme. I, I do have, I do have greater difficulty than he does, though, in, in not, not making comments about details that I think could be, could make it a better fit for the district. Except while I think that it would be a beautiful object anywhere, I'm concerned that it, that it doesn't, that it has certain, certain aspects of it that differ and diverge from its precedence in a way that makes it different from them, and perhaps, for me, make it less, less than a perfect fit for its location. And those come down to two basic things. All of the examples that were shown in the, in the very thoughtful presentation as precedents, even the most modern, had two things that this building kind of lacks, or suppresses perhaps a bit too much. One is scale, and two is texture. And I understand that, that the progression that is proposed, the, the telos of architecture till today, is, is the reduction of those things from, from earlier days. But I think that, in my limited experience here on this commission, I think the buildings that seem to fit in the best within the district, and that contribute to the district, and create a dialogue with the district, and don't stand apart from it, are those that engage with its, the district's qualities in a modern way. And I'm not saying that, that the, that the architect should step back one, one millimeter from their commitment to doing a building that is current, and that is of a language that they are proposing to do here, which is a very minimalist one. The materials that we're given, as stated, are very, like the applicant said, you've got the glass, you've got the, the steel, and you've got the silicone. And I think that the way they are treated on Worcester Street is more effective for me, in terms of giving scale to the building, than they are on Spring. The, the use of the upper story and the hangers to create a texture, for me, works even though the, the renderings show what I would have expected, which is that the reflectivity of the glass, at least during the day, will mitigate that, that sense somewhat. So I think that, that the applicant should explore on. So I think that, that the applicant should explore on, on, somehow to bring some level of, of that scale, which is created by the, the hangars on the upper level, around to Spring Street in a way that's genuine, that doesn't fake it just to make a gesture that's architectural, but, but that's integral to the scheme as their minimalist ethos would indicate. The second thing is texture. There, there is texture to this building. Once you kind of dial down your expectations from, from the typical Soho building, and you focus in on it, there is texture. There's the dip created by the silicone, there's the little pop-out created by the cork at the corner and the cornice at the top. And those are what we get for texture here, and I think that those minimalist elements could be explored to give the building some more depth. One thing that hasn't been addressed here, and I understand the need to preserve every centimeter for interior retail space, is the fact that New York City now allows for projections into the streetscape for shading devices and other elements that would, you know, exponentially increase the, the, the real estate available for architectural gestures that, that sought to mitigate the building, or kind of tie the building in with the district. The third comment, and I'll stop after that, is that on Spring Street, the, every single building on the Spring Street on the elevation is a tri, except for one, is a tripartite building. And even though nested within them is this A-B relationship, where you have the core, stair, and then spaces, I don't think that's expressed, and I think that the expression of the A-B here, for me, reads both as, yet, a gesture that pulls that element away from the street, and also one that feels artificial to the rest of the building, which is so plainer and so kind of of itself. It seems like a very overt gesture to a kind of asymmetry that doesn't really exist on the site. So I'd ask them to consider that as well.
Okay. Roberta?
Okay, so overall, I thought that the presentation was fantastic, and I, I think that the building is, is interesting and a good building. And so, I, you know, I just sort of looked at it and wondered, and how is it different, what would make it different in this location than in any other location, because it's, because it is the historic district, and what kinds of questions should we be asking, or what can we be looking for? And I think that there should, I mean, I think that that's our job, is to look at it and to decide, or to try to find out how to make sure that it's not just a great building everywhere, but that it's a great building in this district. And I think that in terms of at least, I mean, it is a small building, so it's not overwhelming, and I think it's very delicately designed or built up really. And I guess just maybe along the, along the plane lines ever mentioned before, I would just like to see, make, and have the architect just think about if there's anything in the community, the neighborhood, that should somehow be, I don't want to say reflected, but should be a part, should be thought about in doing this, that maybe they have. I mean, I like the building, but I'm just, you know, thinking that in terms of the neighborhood, maybe there are other things that could be incorporated, and these could be a part of the, of the rest of the building, or something. I guess I just wanted to be like, this is home, and right now it's nice, but I'm not sure.
A little more convinced of it's appropriate, it's in the district. Diana?
Well, I think the first thing I would say is, it was, it's unexpected, and we see a lot of things at the commission, but I think one of the hallmarks of, of really fine architecture is that it is unexpected, kind of surprises you in some ways. I, I think this is such a handsome building. It's a very elegant expression of the development of how structural transparency has evolved in architecture in this district. And I think the way that the sculptural and functional interior provides a context for the district does work unexpectedly, not something you would, we see a lot of glass buildings, and often they're, they're just, they are just a glass box, or they're something that's really very imitative of current architecture, but not really trying to make a bridge with, with the past, and fit into the context of the district. And I, I think this, this actually succeeds. And I do agree with the concerns about how light will work. I think that's going to be very critical to enhance this dialogue, which I think it can do. And I even, just the minimal, the minimalism of the signage, I think is great. Just the whole, the, the whole way this, I think it's, it's really a lovely building, and I do believe it, it can fit in this district.
Chris?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think it's a success. It's a work of art and architecture, very specific to this district. I would tend, I think I would agree with Commissioner Bland about the interior, that it would, the interior should be part of our designation, let alone with the exterior, because I think it's important in this, this design.
Okay. It does seem integral to it. Whether or not that can ever be regulated, I don't know. We'd have to, we'd have to look at that. In a new building, it's more, we have more leeway along those lines. But I'm asked about the, I don't know whether it was addressed, the AC unit on top of, what is the material of that box up there?
The enclosure would be the same bead.
Please.
The enclosure would be the same bead blasted stainless steel here, and on the stair enclosure as well.
Does that shape that visible in the rendering?
I, I believe it is. I think the window is pulled further back, on this, showing, and you can see the same splint of this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it is up there. We're, we're pulling the units back to the corner.
Yes.
This up here is a glass, a cholesterol.
I come down more in Fred's camp. I think there are a couple of questions that still remain to be addressed, and certainly Michael's raised some fundamental ones, and I think there have been some others that relate to the extent to which the interior becomes part of the regulatory scheme, is the, it's not an artful way to put it, it happens to be what we do, though, and it'll have to be something that'll happen to be, because it is so, because it is integral, and because it's a new building, maybe we can see our way clear to overcoming that. But I believe that it makes the case for appropriateness in the district based on, and based on the development of that, of cast iron up on, and the development of, of glass, more and more glass. And it also works, I mean, I'm very persuaded, although it has nothing to do with the Soho district, with the three buildings along Lever House, Manufacturers Hanover, and Seagram's, how it is almost a continuum of that, too. So I find it, in all those respects, a fine building, an appropriate, in an appropriate building in this district, but I think we still need to answer a couple more of these issues before we can act on it. I don't think there's sufficient ability to act on it now, but I think there, you've heard the discussion, we've heard your presentation, which was as good as it gets in terms of presenting and the underlying architecture. So with that, we would close this hearing today, and we'll under, we'll think about those issues, talk to the staff about it, and then we'll revisit it for action, but not take an action today. Motion to close. Hearing is.